We'll move on to Article 34. So this is the Planned Residential Development Bylaw, Section 10 of our bylaw. And just to give you a little background, the Planned Residential Development Bylaw's been in place since the 1970s. It went through a couple of renovations over the years. The first renovation was to add affordable housing requirements and effectively meant that there were almost no planned residential developments for a while because they were probably too stringent. And then those requirements were, in effect, relaxed. There still are some, but they're relaxed. They're there for bonus density. And other requirements were put in place. And since then, there have been additional laws put into place, or PRDs that have been built since the early 2000s. So now it's been about 20 years since we've had that bylaw in place, and things have changed, and it's time to look at making a few adjustments. And in particular, you know, as we've reviewed PRD applications over the last few years, we've just thematically seen some things that we, as a board, would prefer to see in these developments, and we felt that it made sense to enshrine those in the bylaw going forward. So what we're planning to do are a few different things. First of all, to update the Principal Use Regulations Table to add site plan review to a PRD. So, believe it or not, today, even though these are major developments, many units, they don't have all the criteria of a site plan review that we would, you know, subject other kinds of major projects to. The second is that we would update Section 10. First of all, to change the Permit Granting Authority for planned residential developments. So today, the Permit Granting Authority is the ZBA, though the Planning Board actually probably spends the majority of the time with the developer in each of these projects because we are, we develop the recommendation that then the ZBA acts upon. And then finally, and this is probably the bulk of the changes, to better align the open space, housing diversity, and sustainability provisions that are in the bylaw with the town's long-range plan, which was recently updated. So let's go through each of these in turn. As I mentioned, there have been 27 PRDs that have been built in Concord since 1977, and there were a batch of them that were basically done in the 80s, and there's another batch that's been done since about 2000. So what we do with the site plan review for PRDs is to really take a process that's currently used for institutional business and industrial uses, such as, you know, hotel, motel, and mixed-use projects, and to apply those same site plan review criteria to the planned residential development. So this is, looks like we can look at things like lighting, stormwater, you know, siting of utilities, all the kinds of aspects that a major development project really should get review on. So that's the first thing that we want to change. Second thing on the permitting authority, you know, as you look at the range of responsibilities of our boards, the zoning board is most often looking at projects to change an existing property. When it comes to laying out a new development, the permitting authority for the, for example, subdivision, the laying out of roads for a new development, that's the Planning Board. What's more is if we have a residential cluster, a residential compound special permit, the Planning Board is doing that. So thematically, new development, kind of greenfield development, is something that the Planning Board, as the planning, kind of organ of the town, is what we think should be handling this. The second reason that the Planning Board perhaps should be the Permit Granting Authority is just for the sake of efficiency. So today, we go through a very extensive process in the Planning Board of review. We compose our recommendation letter, and then the process effectively starts all over again in the ZBA. And this is not only a burden on developers, but it's a burden on the public, who has an interest in these projects and feels that they need to show up at innumerable meetings. So this is our proposal to make that change. Now, let's move to the other aspects of the bylaw to align with the long-range plan. So the first one is with open space requirements. Today, Concord requires 25 percent of open space to be set aside, and when we look at recent projects, in fact, you can just look with this chart, since 2000, you can see the amount of open space as a percentage that's been set aside, and that there's been a slow but steady decline in the amount of open space that is offered by developers in their proposals. So just going back for a second, when we looked in at neighboring towns' PRD bylaws, what we found was that ours had the least open space required. In fact, at 25 percent, it was less than, I think the next was at 33 percent, but they were up to 40 percent. So what we thought was it was worth, again, if you look at this chart, looking at historically where these projects have gone, and that we've had a pretty good track record of having at least that much open space offered. So we wanted to ensure going forward that we actually did get that much. So we're setting that as the low bar now, instead of 25 percent. Okay, the next point is the diversity of PRD housing units. So one of the trends, other trends that we've been seeing in PRDs lately is unit sizes are getting bigger and bigger. And that means that PRDs are not all that different from subdivisions. I mean, yes, they set aside some open space, but, you know, they're looking less and less like alternative forms of development. So what we're suggesting is to try to incent developers to build more of the types of units that we need. And those are, first of all, ones that have more than 2,500, or less than 2,500 square feet of gross floor area, and also those that are more accessible, because we have a changing, aging population in town, and we would like to see more units with a zero-step entry that, and with a master bedroom and full bath on the first floor, so that they are accessible. And so what we're proposing to do is to be able to offer density bonuses in that case. Then, sustainable design. I think that we've seen that thematically for this town meeting. There are a number of proposals around sustainability. With regards to the planned residential development, again, because this is new greenfield development, these are developments that ought to model the future of our energy use, not the past. So we have, as a board, I think, been increasingly concerned with proposals that don't express this kind of interest, and so we would like to mandate, basically, green building design and low-impact development. So we consulted with our sustainability director in town, and we come up with this set of criteria that we would incorporate then into the PRD bylaw for future evaluation of PRD proposals. And then finally, there's the notion of a wetland. And so what we wanted to do here was to really broaden the definition of a wetland so that when most people would look at something and say, "That's a wetland," that indeed it would be a wetland. Okay, so we're going to now exclude all federal, state, or local regulated wetlands from the calculation of upland area, okay? And again, we've seen, is there less and less developable land in town? We've seen proposals that, you know, are taking more marginal types of sites. And then we just also made an update to the Clean Water Act, you know, as the reference for the wetlands definitions. So, and then finally, I believe here, is the Tree Preservation Bylaw compliance. So, you know, it was always our intent that the Tree Preservation Bylaw would apply to these kinds of developments, but it wasn't explicitly the case, and so there was some ambiguity. And so we wanted to clarify that that was the case. Now, the other issue is that with PRDs, we do have a different set of steps that are taking place. So, you know, to do your tree inventory and all that, it's not like you're an existing property owner doing a redevelopment. This is a new development. So we made a couple of changes to reflect that, and so that now that would be included in the PRD bylaw. Oh, and then, sorry, there is one more, which is alignment of height requirements. So today, the height restrictions for a PRD strictly state that height is maximum is 35 feet of height. Now, that does not take into account different kinds of special cases that can occur, and so anyone that needs to exceed that height would need a variance from the bylaw, which of course is very difficult to grant. So there is already a provision in our bylaw for the ZBA to grant a relief from height requirements under certain cases, and so just to make this uniform with all the rest of residential development, we were going to apply that same criterion here. So this, once again, is, you know, aligned with our envisioned Concord Plan. We're trying to, you know, use the PRD as it was originally intended to be an alternate form of development that allows this higher density, more walkable, and economically diverse neighborhoods, and really to add provisions to the bylaw that would make it more likely to generate those sorts of units, and more small-scale, affordable, and workforce housing that's sustainable, resilient, and consistent with town character. So, questions, comments?
Rich Feely, 347 Lexington Road. What's magic about 2,500 square feet, Matt? I mean, I think it's admirable that we're encouraging small, but I think a number of us in this room probably grew up in houses that were less than 2,500 square feet. And I really worry, you know, the teacher married to the nurse is not going to be able to buy a new construction 2,500-square-foot house, particularly when we're raising the open space requirement. I'm not disagreeing with that. But if we want, quote, "workforce housing," I think we, you know, we need to provide an incentive, because it's pretty clear that developers' profit is directly proportional, or the perceived profit, directly proportional to the square footage of the units they're selling. So I would ask, why 2,500? Why don't we encourage, you know, 1,800, 2,000-square-foot units that might sell for $400,000 or $500,000?
Okay.
Hi, Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I appreciate most of the sustainability measures about the transfer of the permitting authority from the zoning board of appeals to the planning board. I have some questions, clarifications. I'm not sure that I find that a good idea, but, so the question is, the laws require that once an application has been submitted to the grant permit granting authority, then there is 90 days in which to respond to them. Otherwise, the project goes ahead, correct, by default?
Well, we would have to hear.
Yes, of course.
Yes.
Yes, but nevertheless, you would have, you know, so that would, as you mentioned, would speed up the process, but I think, more importantly, I think it would deprive the public discussion, the public of the discussion that is held with the planning board without the pressure of, you know, a permit being required within 90 days. And is, I'm assuming that is correct, that all the preliminary discussions that the applicant would want to have would be not in the, in public, but in private with town departments and town planners, and possibly in one-on-one conversations with board members, but not, not in a public discussion. So I think it kind of shortchanges the process, because the PRDs affect the entire neighborhood and increase the density. It's different than a subdivision. So, am I correct in making these assumptions?
Elizabeth, do you want to speak to the timelines?
So the, the public comment process would not change by going from a special permit granting authority from the zoning board of appeals to the planning board under mass general law. When the special permit is filed, the special permit granting authority has 65 days in which to open a public hearing. Once the public hearing is open, the 90-day timeline does not start until the public hearing is closed. Once the public hearing is closed, the special permit granting authority has 90 days in which to file their decision with the town clerk. There is no time limit on how long the public hearing can remain open. There's currently a PRD, previous PRDs where the public hearing has stayed open for six months, eight months, 10 months. The 90-day clock does not start until the public hearing is closed.
Thanks. Okay, so my other question is, I need to think about this between now and town meeting. If one wanted to make, suggest an amendment that keeps all the other measures, but makes the ZBA remain the grant permitting authority and keep all the other factors the same as they are now in terms of planning board's duties and et cetera, what is, I mean, maybe this is, I don't know if this is the place to ask that. I mean, our town moderator is here, our town clerk is here. Do we just, like, make a statement, A, is it possible, and B, do we make a statement saying, you know, keep everything the same, but do not grant the, don't, do not grant the?
So the town moderator is here, and you could consult with her. I think that that would be within scope, I'm saying, just because you're striking one of the proposals.
Right.
But I think how it would be worded, all that stuff, there are certainly people that could help.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Ellen Quackenworth, 206 Prairie Street. And I want to thank the planning board for a previous presentation in which you focused on workforce housing. And I live in workforce housing on Prairie Street. I think I have a 1,500-square-foot house, first floor. I really think that we need to take seriously those people who work in our town, the firefighters, the people who work in Emerson, the teachers, that can't afford to live in our houses. I don't think it's, the difference between low income and 1-point-something million dollars, I think, is a gap, a serious gap in our workforce, a serious gap in our housing goals. And I would say the planning board should really take seriously those people who live in town and how to make those, what, it was at $600,000 houses? And it's in many other parts of the country that's a fortune, but here in Concord, it is not. And so I think that we've kind of missed the boat in terms of the workforce housing, and I think that you should really consider that seriously as you consider housing in this town. I think that, you know, we want those folks to be able to live here. Thank you.
Yeah, and we did kind of cover that in our public forum, for example, but tonight we didn't have the opportunity to do the preamble that would be, thematically, we're trying to bridge that gap, yes.
Yeah, hi. Ed Teedham, 656 Barrett Mill Road. I'd like to, first, I'd just like to make a comment relative to the previous comment that, oops, I'm a little, yes, yep. Part of the problem is the acoustics in this room are funky.
Oh, it's terrible.
So somebody should do a little bit of engineering to put some acoustic damping, but other than that point, that would solve a lot of the problems, because in a room this size, we probably don't even really need mics if we had the acoustics right, but enough said. Yeah, I just want to make the comment that when I was growing up, 2,500-square-foot house was a pretty nice-sized house, and I did not grow up in an inexpensive neighborhood. But what I really want to get to here is this change of removing the wetlands conservancy from this particular one, so that it is only the floodplain conservancy. And I, my concern is that will change the calculations significantly on the density in many of our existing PRDs, okay, and will allow significantly enhanced ones. One I'm particularly thinking about is Wright Farm, which is a lot of wetlands, and the town changed the rules a number of years ago, which then made them allowed to be able to build more places, houses, and this could go back and do that. So right now, you're stripping out, and you brought this up in one of your slides, the calculation is only based upon the floodplain conservancy district, not the wetlands.
No, it's land that's not within the floodplain conservancy district or freshwater wetlands. It's both.
Okay.
Yes, this is tightening, not loosening.
It's tightening?
Yes.
Okay, so this, because my, okay, so you're saying that it's tightening that, so there, the federal, state, or regulated wetlands is a larger than the wetlands only?
Well, basically, we're saying, anybody that declares, any of these authorities that declare this to be a wetland, we say, "Yep, that's a wetland."
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
That would be, okay.
Yeah.
So I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Matt, a technical question. When does, if this were to pass by town meeting, when would this ordinance go into effect? Would it be immediate? I presume it can't be retroactive, but it, so it is, does it go into effect immediately?
It would not take effect until the Attorney General certifies it.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And any sensibility whether other towns have received approval of this kind of document?
Well, we typically would get the certification, you know, in the summer, late summer, early fall.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I very much support improvements along, you know, the lines of sustainability, wetlands, open space, more affordable housing, all that. I'm wondering if there's a specific reason why you chose to combine those improvements to the bylaw with the change of granting authority instead of making it two separate motions, because to me, the, all the unforeseen consequences of changing the granting authority and the process, especially when a lot of the public doesn't know all the details, it's great that Elizabeth, who's the town planner, explained some of the timetable, but, you know, again, I wonder if there's a specific reason other than saving print that those were combined, because they seem like very, animals are very different colors.
So there is one reason that I can cite, which is, for example, the changes we're making to the references to the Tree Preservation Bylaw are relative to it being in a special permit process. So if we now would not be the permit granting authority, then we would not be in a special permit process, so some of, maybe the language about pulling the Tree Preservation Bylaw in might not be accurate anymore.
So there were some crossover?
Yeah, yeah, basically.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Alyssa Brown, 158 Laurel Street. I was looking at the Section 10.2.11 Sustainable Design Requirement.
Yes.
And this, as opposed to all the other items in here that says the planning board shows, this one just says that the proposal should reflect thoughtful consideration of a broad range of sustainability goals. And then it says this design should be consistent with and further the goals of the town. But I found, in general, when you ask developers to thoughtfully consider things, they do thoughtfully consider them and then reject them as being untenable or, you know, not financially viable. And although this may be a step in the right direction, I don't think it'll do you any good whatsoever unless you're able to put a little bit more teeth into that.
Paul Winkler, 1414 Main Street. Very familiar with the PRD and recognize the driving functions for a number of these suggestions and changes. At the risk of fighting or preparing to fight the last battle, looking forward, how many, or can you speak to the amount of survey of surrounding towns' PRD processes with respect to these changes that you guys went through? To pick these in particular, you know, not to address particular problems that you've seen in the past, but...
Yeah, so...
The next PRD that comes up is going to have its own set of issues and unique things to its project. How covered are we for the next project as opposed to the one that we are still going through?
So I should just mention that, you know, Haley Oredahl did a survey of the local PRD bylaws, and that's where we, the most, the things that took out most was, of course, the open space requirement, and that's also just the most, the simplest to compare because of the numeric value. But the other thing that she uncovered was there's, there was a lot of emphasis in green design in the other bylaws, and so that was the inspiration, I think, to, for our adoption of that language. As far as the other changes that were out there, tree preservation, of course, is one of our own bylaws that we wanted to cross-reference, and then the height regulations are relative to our own bylaws. So these, these are not just kind of whiplash effects from any, you know, one proposal. They really are, okay, aligned with our bylaws, aligned with regional changes, and of course the interests of the town and the long-range plan. So that's where we are.
And that's...
And yeah, it will continue to be a negotiation going forward. I'm sure 10 years from now, we'll be back and saying what we need to do next. But one of the, I think, cautionary tales that we have had around the PRD bylaw was to think back to that era, you know, the decade of the 90s, where the changes that were made, you know, were onerous to the extent that the PRD model was not used, and so we just had subdivisions from that era. And so we do want to make this an appealing alternative, but to be an alternative that, if it's constructed, is worth having.
Right. I guess the last question would be, is there one or two provisions that fell just below the line that didn't make it in?
Wow, that's a good question for the board. What do you think? I think we put our whole wish list in here. Did we leave anything off?
I mean, I don't think we left anything out, but I think we chose language that would still allow us some flexibility in evaluating things. I think we specifically didn't put very restrictive language, knowing that this is going to be, hopefully, a bylaw for quite some time. And in particular, I think Haley had found some really specific language in other bylaws, and that's what we talked about a lot, but, but the general feel for those things, I think we captured all of them.
Yeah, so for example, we didn't put a formula in that said, "If you have 50 percent of this type, you get the X amount of this type," because it's, we think that that's going to change over time, what the ratio should be.
Thank you.
Dan Gainsborough, Lowell Road. Just curious, and you may have covered this at a previous meeting, but how does the zoning board of appeals feel about the shift of...
So we did have a joint meeting where we discussed this proposal, and so, you know, I can't speak for the ZBA even more than I can't speak for the planning board in, you know, normal conversation, but they, you know, they were okay with it. Now, they weren't as thrilled with it. Their one question was that they said, "Hey, our job is to keep the town out of court." You know, so we, we're like here as the sort of final, you know, frontier to prevent that if the planning board became capricious. So that was the one hesitation we heard. Otherwise, I think they were just as glad not to see another PRD. They weren't as thrilled as they were about not seeing another hammerhead lot, and that's what we'll turn to next.
And Matt, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, and Elizabeth, but my understanding and my review, and my reviews of other, is this on? In my reviews of other PRDs, it's actually fairly common for it to be, the planning board to be the granting authority. It's not very common for the ZBA to be the authority, actually.
Yeah.
Steve Carr, 308 Mustafield Road. That was the question I was going to ask, whether the, how the zoning board felt about it, and having once been on your side of the table, my initial question was, is the zoning board be upset? And my second question was, why did you let this happen to you? But anyway, because you've taken on some extra work. But I also have one small question on the, on the density bonus. It says you get a density bonus if 50 percent of the units are less than 2,500 gross square feet. I think you've seen and heard some sentiment here tonight that some people wonder whether that number is maybe too large, and maybe you want to think about that before the town meeting.
Well, we can't tighten it, because that would not be within the scope of the article. But... But the other thing to note is this is gross, gross square feet, right? It's not living area, so...
So are garages included? Are porches included?
So it's calculated the same way that we do gross floor area elsewhere in the bylaw. I could even read you the definition.
In basements?
So, let's go right to the definition. Gross floor area, the sum of horizontal areas of the floors of the building measured from the exterior face of the exterior walls, or from the center line of a wall separating two buildings, not including any space where the floor-to-ceiling height is less than 6 feet 8 inches.
So an open porch is...
Open porch would not be considered.
Garage?
I mean, open porches, at least in other parts of our bylaw, we tend to try to encourage those kinds of... But garages count towards our floor area ratio, it's a separate structure.
If it's attached?
Then the, I can't...
I don't need to know, I mean, those questions may be raised, not real long line. But then going on, it says 50% are less than 2,500 gross square feet with a one-car garage. If there's no garage, is that entitled to the, to the bonus? I don't know what the right answer is, but again, it sort of implies that you have to have a one-car garage. Maybe no-car garage is even better than a one-car garage.
Yes, that's true. I wish that we had seen proposals that even had very many of them. Yes.
Hi, Joe Stein, 21 Thoreau Street. So I just want to say thank you for increasing the minimum size of open space. I think that's great. But it did range from, if I recall, 25 to 40 percent, and given our tradition of open space in this land, I'm curious if the board had any discussion in terms of why not 40%? Thank you.
We had discussions of whether 33 versus 35, and we ended up at 35.
Matt, can I, this brings up the issue of wanting to make this as aggressive as possible, but still want developers to choose this over the subdivision. So this touches on a lot of the things that are being brought up in terms of the size of the homes and whether we could have a garage, and so it was like, how aggressive can we make this, wanting and incentivizing the PRD over a typical, as of right subdivision?
This wasn't going to be my comment, but since Joe just made that question about the open space, I was listening to your discussion of January 21st on the online video, and I noticed some discussion about, could that be amended or not, if somebody wanted to make an amendment to increase that percentage? And I think...
You could decrease it, but not increase it.
Yeah, I was wondering why that is.
It's the scope of the article, basically, that you, I mean, again, we have our moderator here, maybe she could speak to scope of articles and amendments, that basically if you want to liberalize or, you know, relax restrictions, that could still be within scope. But if you tighten restrictions, then that's out of scope of the article, meaning that, you know, you're, so when you go to a 40% open space requirement versus 35, that is making this a more stringent bylaw. And so someone who wasn't, you know, noticed that that additional restriction might be coming, could say, "Hey, you just did something that you, you weren't proposing." And yet, if we do something more relaxed, like 33% versus 35, it's not increasing the scope of the bylaw. It's a rough description, but it's...
Doesn't that work the other way, too? Like if somebody says, "Make it 20%"?
No, you can, so you can take off that the ZBA, you know, that the planning board become the granting authority, because that's not making a change. You know, it's making less of a change is okay, not making a change is okay, but making more of a change is not okay.
Okay. So in terms of the question about permitting authority, again, I was at that meeting, the joint meeting with the ZBA, and as, as you mentioned, one concern was that they are, they want to make sure the town doesn't get sued, so, which is another concern I have, which is that if the planning board is the permitting authority, then that restricts the planning board in a similar fashion. So whenever there are, like, soft areas, and, you know, you know, I'm usually very interested in natural preservation, that's one of my issues, there might not be as much comfortable discussion. And another thing that came up at that meeting was that the ZBA chair said that usually the ZBA okay's whatever the planning board ends up saying anyway. So in that sense, it wouldn't necessarily be meeting after meeting, like you said, like, it wouldn't be starting the process all over again legally perhaps, but not in terms of substance. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, I think we'll move to the next article.